Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the August 5, 2014 Business Meeting of the Washington County Board of Education. I'd like to call the meeting to order. We have a form of members present. I'd like to first invite everybody to join me in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment's silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any students or guests that members of the board would like to introduce today? Okay. That brings us to approval of the agenda.
Mr. President, I'd like to recommend for approval the agenda as recommended by the Agenda Committee.
Is there a second?
A second.
Motion by Mrs. Brightman, seconded by Mr. Bailey, to approve the agenda. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor of approving the agenda? Are there any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero, and the student member concurs. That brings us to the minutes.
Mr. President, I'm moving that we adopt the minutes from the closed session held on Tuesday, July 15, 2014, and on the same date, the minutes from a business meeting conducted same date.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Bailey, seconded by Mrs. Brightman, to approve the minutes. Are there any corrections or amendments or discussion regarding the minutes? If not, all those in favor of approval? Are there any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero, and the student member concurs. Public comment is next on the agenda. There are two individuals who signed up to speak. The first is Mr. Brent Taylor. Mr. Taylor here? Okay. Second individual signed up to speak is, and I may get the name incorrect, Temi Moses. Okay, 0-for-2. Is there anybody here who'd like to speak? I say that only in jest. I mean, not just, not completely in jest. If anybody would like the opportunity to, please do. Okay? And if anybody knows either Mr. Taylor or Ms. Moses, and they show up later on, please flag me down, and we'll make sure they get the opportunity to, to speak and say what they would like to say. That brings us to the superintendent's report. Dr. Wilcox?
Thank you very much, Dr. Harding. This afternoon, what we would like to do is really introduce two topics to the board. The first topic that we're going to speak to is Social Sentinel. We're going to provide an update to the board. As all of you know, we have a great interest in social media, how it is used at our campuses, but our interest in keeping our children safe and out of harm's way is larger. And so we've asked Tom Mott, who is a senior vice president for Social Sentinel, to join us today. And doing a presentation will be Jamie Hay, who's the special assistant to the superintendent, who's going to walk the board and community through this document. I should also share with the board that I previously provided to you a copy of a set of questions and answers that we'll make available, not only on our website, but throughout our community, in terms of a hand-delivery to children and to their parents. We will also send a letter to all parents, letting them know where we're going next with this activity. And finally, I would say to each of you that we are going to meet, over the course of the year, with a number of student groups, including our Student Government Association, to make them aware of how we're using this new technology. And we'll be meeting with PTOs and PTSA groups, as well as other school groups, to make sure that our community understands that our purpose is solely to keep young people safe as they use social media. With that, I'm going to turn this presentation over to Jamie Hay.
Thank you, Dr. Harding, and Dr. Wilcox, board members. Today, we are going to talk about Social Sentinel. You can see on the display, assess, alert, avert. That is a big thing, which is especially with our recent social media policy that was passed, and just school safety. School safety for, number one, the students, which is very important. But we also need to remember, we have staff. We have faculty inside schools, inside our CES here. We also have, and being a former elementary school teacher, I had some great parent volunteers. Parent volunteers are also in the schools, in elementary, kind of predominant, that parents are walking in and out throughout the day. So we're looking for safety. Safety is the big concern here. So as we look, ensuring school safety, you are going to see that there are a few things that we're looking at with our social media. We are looking at bullying. We are looking at harassment, threats, weapons, drugs, and alcohol. Now, inside, kind of behind this bullying word, there are a lot of key words that are going to jump out at us. And Social Sentinel, they will actually take those key words, and if a student is in the school, and they are bullying, and they decide to tweet and say something that triggers one of those key words, we're going to have some things occur. We are going to have text alerts. We are going to have emails that are going to be sent to some individuals throughout Washington County, some executive teams, some of the principals. Now, first of all, we're looking at the different schools. Forty-six schools, we have drawn this fence. Social Sentinel has taken this fence and drawn around each of the schools. And what's going to happen? They'll be searching, again, for those key words. Behind that bullying, there are key words that we have identified, that we're working with various other groups to help us identify. Social Sentinel has identified some words that they see throughout the United States and literally throughout the world. So it's really going to help us if something occurs. And again, safety for everyone. So some of the things that we're going to look at, I did mention Twitter. If a student or an adult gives a tweet, well, we also have Facebook to look at. Social Sentinel looks at Facebook. They look at Flickr, Google Plus. Also, very big in the high school, the middle and high school, you're looking at Instagram currently. Meetup, Twitter, Vimeo, and that's just, some of them right now, there will be more added as these geo-caches. Again, if you send a Facebook message, or if you send a tweet out, and you have on your phone or on your device, you have it activated, that, you know, you can see the location, it will find you. So it's nothing that is kind of, you know, behind, we're not doing anything that we shouldn't be. Anyone can actually see it. It's just Social Sentinel has created this product that pulls everything together for So what happens when something like this occurs at one of our schools? What happens when a bullying issue has occurred and triggered those key words? You can see an email or text message will go to a select group, in that normal protocols from within WCPS. Then we're going to send it to the district, the, sorry, to the school administrator. We will decide, as Dr. Wilcox has said many times, if it is a bullying issue that we can take care of inside with the administrators, we will do that. If we have to do other different venues, we will also do that. So what we really need, and just this very quick overview, what we're asking for is community support. We are starting with student governments. As soon as we get back into school, we are going to have the student government start identifying even more key words. Who's best to go to than students? Students will tell you all about the different key words, the slang terms, that we can actually constantly put into the system. Also, back-to-school meetings, we are going to educate, not only teachers, not only students, that we have this ability now, but parents. We need to educate parents and the community, the entire community, that we're not just trying to follow people, we are actually looking for key words only. If they, you don't have, if I send a Facebook message, and I don't have a key word in there that is identified, I'm not going to see it. But if I do, or someone does have a key word that is identified with bullying, harassments, any type of threats, it will be identified to us. Also, we are going to work with PTA's and PTO's throughout Washington County. We are going to look for key words. We're going to ask them. We are going to, number one, educate them, because that is very important. And we're going to ask them to help us with some key words that we can add to our resources and our media representatives. We are going to be speaking with them and some other organizations. So basically, what Dr. Wilcox and the entire staff that have really been looking at this and working with this, it is to provide safety. It is the utmost student safety. But again, I encourage you and just let you know, we have other people. We have teachers, we have faculty, we have staff within those buildings, and we also have parents that are in and out of our buildings that we need to keep safe. But students, number one, we are really going to keep them safe by using this, this tool and this product. It is just one of the additional ways that we are supporting safety in the schools.
So if I may say a few things, and then if you have some questions, we have Mr. Mott, who has come in from California to talk to us today as well. And he'll be meeting with all of our administrators tomorrow to update them and share this product with them. I want to just kind of reiterate a couple of things that Mr. Hay said. First and foremost, this is about creating safe and secure environments. It's not just for young people, although that's the primary audience for us in this case, to make sure that we can minimize harm. Because I think every parent who sends their child to us during the course of the day hopes that we will keep them safe and secure in our loving arms. And, you know, the legal terms is in loco parentis. They are ours during that time period. So we want to make sure the kids feel safe. But as Mr. Hay pointed out, there are also adults who are sometimes involved in complicated situations outside the school, and we want to keep them safe as well while they're within our walls. We don't want the problems of the adults to interfere with what's going on in the school. But that said, I know there are some who worry about the intrusiveness of this. I would simply say to each and every one of you, we are not interested in people's social life. We're not interested in them pushing what they had for breakfast. We're not interested in, and I shouldn't do that with the Folks for Hunger coming up here in a minute, but we're, but we're really not interested in some of the kinds of things that are just dramas in people's life. What we're interested in is keeping a safe and secure environment for our kids, where they don't have to fear the threat of gun violence or the threat of bullying. So we are going to move, I think, forward aggressively and progressively to monitor these technologies. But I should point out to you that if we sat around with adults to try to monitor this, it would take hundreds of adults every day, all day, to do it. The technology has evolved to a place that we can let a company that has roots in California, but has a national presence, monitor this for us today and provide email updates that will allow us to act within our normal protocols. We're not doing anything different here, except we are acting based on key information that we get, insights that we get into what's going on within our schools. With that, I'm going to turn it over to the board. Mr. President, if you want to allow any questioning, otherwise we'll move on to our next presentation.
Sure. Invite questions from members of the board. Mrs. Fisher?
Well, this service only analyze emails or messages on these different social devices that are outgoing from within this circle? What about things coming from outside in?
So the system and the technology itself, actually, first of all, I want to clarify, doesn't look at emails, and it doesn't look at text messages. It's only social media, and it's only social media that's, that's public-facing. And when I say public-facing, any one of us that has a smartphone or a smart device, you can, you can set privacy settings that would actually prevent us from being able to see this. We're not, we're not the NSA. We're not doing anything that, that isn't public-facing. And, and the way that we've adopted this software is the ability to put, as we, as Jamie mentioned, a fence, a geo-fence around your campuses. And anything that's posted from inside that fence is what we see. It has to be posted from inside that fence for us to see it. If somebody is, is posting something outside that fence, you won't see it. So it's only inside the fence. And you actually determine those boundaries yourselves. You can draw those boundaries any way you want to.
So, Mrs. Fisher, to the point, we've chosen to draw the boundaries around our campuses, but with the consent of the board, or perhaps with the consent of other individuals who perhaps are in our safety and security, like Mr. Ganley, we may find the occasion to draw the circle a little bigger if we think that perhaps there's some gang violence that's occurring just off-site of our facility, or we think that there might be a fight organizing across the street from one of our campuses. We may be able to see whether or not young people are in fact saying, "Show up at this fight," you know, through social media. Or if they're posting pictures of upcoming violence, we might be able to see that.
Mrs. Bright?
From the initial identification of a key word, what is the time elapsed before, say, an administrator receives the alert?
So we have, in the system itself, you can set up instant alerts via text or email. You can also set up email alerts that, that could be hourly, if you so decided. I mean, that's really a, a district decision. But text alerts are immediate. Email alerts can be staged over a period of time. And then there's also the ability to get a daily or a weekly report of all the alerts that were issued. So there's some tracking of capability at, at the district for that as well. So the most important thing, though, is if a key word hits the bar and it's triggered as an alert, a text message is delivered immediately.
Immediate.
And if I put something into play from inside the school, it is a matter of seconds before it is recognized and the email is sent. We've tested it here, and it is sometimes instantaneous.
I guess my thought is, a principal is usually, hopefully, not always in his or her office, but out walking the school, and may not be tethered to an email, but a text or some sort of smartphone alert.
Correct, yes.
Okay. Data storage. Back to your NSA analogy, what kind of security on the data, and how long is the data retained?
So the data that we are storing, or anything that, that you set up as key words inside your geo-fences, we're collecting that information, and it's available to you for 30 days. That's, that's the protocol that we have set today. Doesn't that, we couldn't change that? I mean, we could make it shorter, we could make it longer. You can actually tell us, you know, what you want that to be. But from our focus groups, as we sort of, as we began to roll this product out, that 30-day window seemed to be enough that if I see something, I can go back and look and see if there was, you know, more context to the conversation on social media that may be of importance to me. And I can also then start to follow forward and, and follow the conversation. But right now, it's 30 days. In terms of security, I mean, we, you know, I've been in several companies that provide technology services to education, and we would put our security capabilities up against any product or service you use. And I would, I wouldn't, I don't mean this in the wrong way, but I think that we could probably get into your system, easily, and get in ours, so.
We probably didn't want to hear that, so, okay. Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
Mr. Bailey?
For our viewing audience, could we just have a sample or two of key words that would
If we would, if the word "kill,"
Okay.
The word "bomb," we're looking at the word, any type of, there's some different slang words that we, from Antietam Academy, that I'm not sure is appropriate, but any of those words will trigger that in an instance.
So it would pick up on slang that is not found in a dictionary or in an encyclopedia or anyplace else?
As part of the beginning of this, I have been working with a few principals throughout the county, and one in particular, and their resource officer, that they actually have a board in their, their room with the slang words that is, it's ever-changing. And he gave me a list of all the slang words and kind of gave me some definitions.
Thank you. That's helpful.
Are there other questions? Mrs. Fisher?
This service sounds like it, it will be very helpful for determining possible violence that might occur in the school or in or around it, or bullying and so on. What are we going to do about protecting our, our students from, let's say, predators on the outside because they are now using social media?
You know, the system isn't really designed to do that. It's designed to work on your campuses and to pay attention to what's happening on your campuses, to the extent, I mean, I, I think that, again, I'm, I'm very involved in the school district where my children go, and I know that we work really hard to bring educational programs to the, to the parents, to help them understand how to be, how to be better at monitoring their, their child's use of social media. I mean, I'll let Dr. Wilcox speak to that. I'm sure you have something happening here in terms of educating students and parents about, about the appropriate use of social media. That's really not our role as a company. Our role is just to look for potential key words and phrases and threats on your campuses.
And that will be part of our report to you when we talk about our technology plan coming up in the not-too-distant future.
Okay, thank you.
Are there other questions?
One thing that I would like to share before we let the gentleman sit, sit down and we bring our next group up is that, while we're focused on school safety and security today, there are other aspects of this technology that we might afford ourselves to at some point down the road. You know, have you ever been to a forum where you knew that things went well, and people were really pleased with what was going on? It would be possible to set up a set of filters to see, for example, after a superintendent's listening session, who's tweeting about the new attendance lines? What do we want to know about that? It would be possible to do that. Now, we're not set up to do that today, but this technology is not just a technology that can only be used one way. And so we, we think that it's smart, and I think it positions us as a leading school district right now in the country, in terms of our ability to support our students. But we're continuing to look at how we can use this technology in other ways as well that will be beneficial to the larger community. With that, I want to thank both of you for being here, and...
There's a couple more questions.
I opened up a new question.
There's probably a question, and this is, it's related, but it's a little bit off. This booklet that Mrs. Williams was so kind to make sure we all got copies of about social media that came from Mabe, has, and I don't know how far you are on your regulations, but on page 87 to 90, it has an excellent set of regulations from the North Carolina School Boards Association. Did you get a
I did.
Copy of this?
Absolutely.
That I think has a lot of good protections, has warnings for parents and students.
Agreed.
What did you say was the cost of this product? Just so we get some idea of what we're, what the benefit is for what it's costing the system?
I think it's safe to say we're about a dollar per student per year, about $20,000, maybe a little bit more.
Okay. And, I mean, to me, and I, I take a backseat to no one, I think, when it comes to civil liberties and privacy, what's important for me was, when I came to understand that this only deals with things, as I think, Mr. Hay, you said, that are out in the public. When I, when I post something on Facebook, even though there may be ways to limit who can see it, that's essentially a public forum. But if I were to send a personal message to somebody through Facebook, that would not be caught in this web, right? So that, which to me is a more personal, private kind of thing. Same with sending texts, same with sending emails, all those things that I think most of us, and I don't want to get into the middle of a NSA or Supreme Court discussion, but that most of us, I think, think of as being private, are not covered by this. It's when one does something that goes into the public that, that triggers...
That's correct. It's only anything that you allow to be public, and the user really determines that.
And that, for me, is a, is a critical distinction. And for me, it just makes sense as you watch, I mean, kids, when they're in school today, it used to be you'd pass a note in science class, right? Or I'd do it in English class. Definitely not math. But you'd pass a note, right? Today, they don't do that. They use a device and put something up, or else send it to somebody. So, and often, when you'd intercept those notes in class, a teacher would, it would give you some indication of something that may happen or what's going on in the classroom. If kids aren't passing notes anymore, we have to figure out how they are passing notes and how we can get the same kinds of safety for our students that some of those older techniques provided. And to me, with so much cyberbullying going on, and it's not here, it's, just here, it's everywhere, where students can bully each other once they leave the school, this is one tool, I think... can bully each other once they leave the school, this is one tool, I think, for us that will help us try to create that better environment for students. So, I appreciate the very thoughtful way that you've gone about trying to develop this, and trying to ensure that not only our students, but our, our staff are safe, and that, that people understand that we're not out trying to spy on when the book club meeting is on, on Thursday. So, I thank you all for that.
Thank you all. So, thank you very much, Board members. The second item is our update on the Hunger-Free School Initiative. Mr. Prue, who is our Supervisor of Food and Nutrition Services, is going to be joined by a group. And Jeff, I will let you introduce your team as you come forward.
Thank you, Dr. Wilcox, Dr. Harding, members of the board. We'll bring with us a team today to talk about a new designation within the state of the Hunger-Free School Zones. We've had discussions with you previously about our enrollment in the Community Eligibility Program, which is a universal free meal program, breakfast and lunch, available to students, authorized under the Healthy Hunger-Free Kids Act of 2010. Last year was a pilot year, last of the, of the initial pilot years, of which the state of Maryland joined on. We were the only public LEA in the state to join onto that program. We had five sites, school buildings, where we offered free, universal free meals to students. For the coming year, we are adding seven more sites. And so, I'm pleased to announce those, too, if you'll indulge me a moment. The current schools were Antietam Academy, Bester Elementary, Salem Avenue Elementary, the Family Center, and Winter Street Elementary. We are adding for the coming year Eastern Elementary, Funkstown Elementary, Hickory Elementary, Lincolnshire Elementary, Marshall Street, and the Job Development Program, and Ruth A. Monroe Primary. With me today, I have Ms. Erin Kennedy from the Maryland State Department of Education, Mr. Michael J. Wilson from Maryland Hunger Solutions, and Mr. Orr from Maryland Center for Economic Policy. And with that, I will turn it over to the rest of the team for brief remarks.
Hi, good afternoon. As Jeff said, I'm Erin Kennedy. I'm a Coordinator of Select Education Initiatives and Effectiveness at the Maryland State Department of Education. And the Department of Education is honored today to recognize Mr. Prue and Washington County Public School Systems for their successful implementation of the Community Eligibility Provision. As you all know, proper nutrition is essential for proper growth and development. The CEP is another tool schools may use to ensure their students are prepared for academic success. As Mr. Prue mentioned, Washington County was the first school system, public school system in the state, to adopt this provision. And thanks to your vision and leadership, the State Department is now working with other schools across Maryland to adopt CEP for the upcoming school year, ensuring that even more of our children have access to healthy and nutritious meals. So, thank you for your leadership. Thank you for your vision, and congratulations on becoming hunger-free schools.
I'm Michael J. Wilson with Maryland Hunger Solutions. It's a statewide organization that does advocacy, outreach, and education. We work with lots of groups all around the state, including the Washington County Hunger Group, led by Pam and Bill Kristofel, who I know many of you know. We are so proud of what you've done here in Washington County. Washington County has been on the cutting edge of this, to be able to provide meals to kids. Erin's already talked about the importance, and I know all of you know the importance of having breakfast and having lunch, and how it makes you a better student and a better citizen in the school. When I see the sign that you have up there about building a community, community eligibility is exactly about that. It's about building the community and providing additional resources for your students, which is going to be great for Washington County and for all of those students. So, we're very proud. Thank you very much.
Benjamin Orr with the Maryland Center on Economic Policy. We are focused on creating a Maryland where all Marylanders can achieve their full potential in a healthy and growing economy with a growing standard of living. And I don't want to repeat what my colleagues said, but I would just emphasize the, and recognize you for the importance you have placed on nutrition, not only in terms of student health, but also it has outcomes for your local economy as well. And I think that you will see those benefits as your students become members of the workforce, as they become the entrepreneurs and the small business owners in your community. And this will, I think, reap continued benefits over many years. So, thank you very much for your involvement and leadership in this program.
Thank you.
Any questions from board members, or comments? Mrs. Bright?
I just wanted to thank all of you. Mr. Prue, I just think your initiative on this and being a pilot in the state, I think is a great example. I know there were some districts that were hesitant to get involved with this because most of our funding formulas are based on our free and reduced meal paperwork. And if you don't turn in the paperwork, you don't get the money. And there was always a concern that if you didn't have that paperwork, somehow your funding stream would be interrupted. So, I think we've worked through those details, and I'm hoping other districts will look at what you've done and hopefully feel able to, to become a part of this program. We have close to almost 51% of our student body are free and reduced meal children. Our homeless population has gone up to close to 600. So, we have a lot of issues here, and hunger is certainly a large one. And we do have the food truck that we do in the community during the summer, and there's several other initiatives that Jeff and his team have, I think, been instrumental in trying to be sure that we don't let anyone fall through the cracks on this. So, again, thank you. Kudos.
Other, Mr. Bailey?
Jeff, if you'd just take a minute, and again, for our viewing audience, how, how did we come about being able to expand the program?
So, this is developed on a funding formula based on the numbers of students that are, the term we use is directly certified. These are students that come to us who are receiving other meal benefit programs. They may be on food stamps, they may be receiving cash assistance, they may be foster, migrant, runaway, homeless. And so, it's, it's a elaborate federal formula established as part of the, the resolution. And we essentially swap the money that we would receive from our families in the local community for federal dollars. So, the, the other side benefit to this program is it allows us to capture and reuse the federal dollars that our local taxpayers send to Washington. We get to pull them back, all while holding our local discretionary income for other purposes.
Again, very good, very helpful.
Are there other comments? I think to Mrs. Brightman's comment, it's a good example of doing the right thing for the right reason always yields the right result, even though it may be difficult sometimes. But doing the right thing for the right reason here really has provided a benefit, not just to our kids, but to the state, I think. So, congratulations, and thank you for having the courage to do it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I want to thank all of the partners who are at the table, but I think it's also important to note that we sometimes stand on the shoulders of giants, and Pam and Bill Kristofel are here, and they've been leaders in this fight against hunger in our community, and they provide a, a living example of what people can do when they do the right things for the right reasons. Pam and Bill, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. There is no old business today. That brings us then to new business. First item under new business is a donation to Paramount Elementary School from the PTA. No.
Good afternoon, Dr. Harding, it's Dr. Wilcox, members of the board. I'm here today to seek approval of the gift in the amount of $11,895 from the Paramount PTA to Paramount Elementary School. The money donated to the school will be used to purchase 30 additional iPads to enhance technology for the students at Paramount.
Is there a motion?
Mr. President, I move to approve a donation to Paramount Elementary from Paramount Elementary PTA in the amount of $11,895.
Is there a second?
Second?
Motion by Mrs. Brightman, seconded by Mrs. Fisher, to accept the gift to Paramount Elementary School. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor of accepting a gift? Are there any opposed? The motion passes seven to zero, and the student member concurs.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Well done, Mr. Samler. Second item under new business is the Consent Agenda.
Good afternoon, Mr. President, Mr. Superintendent, members of the board. Mrs. Freeman is out of town today on a well-deserved vacation, so Mr. Michael and I are here to present the Consent Agenda. Very quickly, the Consent Agenda requests approval of seven purchases, and as all of these purchases fall under the auspices of one or more of Mr. Michael's departments, I'm going to ask him to provide you with details of the proposed, of the proposed purchases.
Good afternoon, Board members and Dr. Wilcox. Our first item is asphalt overlay at Children's Village. This is part of our unit cost proposals for asphalt. The board approved back in May. At this point, we've exceeded our budget for asphalt overlay in the board's budget, and other money within the maintenance department will be transferred to cover this cost. This is part of an agreement and joint partnership with Children's Village, and was part of their request that, I believe they came before the board back in the spring to provide some additional support. This will be an asphalt overlay in the back portion of their lot, back kind of in the village portion. It's not their entrance way, it's not their parking lot, but this will be performed by Huntsberry Brothers, who is our asphalt contractor at this time. Our second item is for breakfast items, for, from Kellogg's Food Away from Home. We're piggybacking a bid with Baltimore Public Schools. This is for typical breakfast items like cereal, bowls of cereal, cup of cereal, also breakfast bars. And it does include some snack materials like cheese crackers. This is part of, again, as I said, Baltimore County Public School bid. We're piggybacking that, saving some additional costs, and is part of the Food Nutrition Service budget. Our third item, another Food Nutrition Service item, to Ridgefield Brand Corporation. The title of the bid from Montgomery County Public Schools is food products, smoothie beverages, and equipment. What we're actually purchasing is kind of a slushy material product, not material, slushy product, in a 4.4-ounce cup. I believe Jeff indicated that they freeze the cups, set those out, as they kind of thaw, the kids are going to eat them with a spoon, or they could obviously let it melt completely and drink it. And we buy those in a variety of flavors and sell a substantial amount of this material. So, again, it'll be a savings to our Food Nutrition Service budget, and it's a piggyback from Montgomery County Public Schools. Our fourth item is an item we have brought before the board a number of times, was Skyline Technology Solutions. It's a purchase of switches, which will help enhance our capacity to connect to the outside world outside of schools. These are not additional switches, these are actually replacements that help strengthen our pipeline flow from the internet to our schools and out to the access points in the schools, and then ultimately to the devices, the wireless devices we have. Helps balance the load, and again, increases our network capacity. This is a very large purchase. We normally receive about a 71% reduction off of list price for this because we've gathered these orders together in a one-time purchase right now. We do have some benefits in excess of 71% off of list. I think some as high as 76% off of list price. And we're piggybacking this off as we have with the Carroll County bid. Very important to the backbone of our technology structure. As we enhance devices, increase the number of devices, we need to also work on the backbone of our structure as well. Our fifth item I'm very excited about, with our new school at Bester Elementary, coming out of our CIP budget, will be the purchase of 202 MacBooks, laptop computers for the school. Also, 100 iPads will be purchased for the school, and it'll be part of our technology support for Bester Elementary as we open a brand-new school there. This goes to Apple Incorporated. It's a sole-source item. We did receive a volume discount, which they normally don't provide unless you purchase a substantial amount of material at one time. Item six is for the replacement of four servers. We have numerous servers here at the central office. It's my understanding these four servers will update four existing servers that also help support 16 virtual servers. So, if you can kind of follow that, these are four physical servers that are supporting virtual servers as well, and it's part of a replacement cycle. This from Dell Computer Incorporated, and I believe part of the MSET bid. And our last item, item number seven, IBM VMware Blade servers. These are actually specifically purchased from our IBM partner, Tamm Group, and these are all part of the new business software solution that we have purchased. So, they'll be for the sole purpose of setting up that hardware, the purchase of the hardware, and then obviously the operation of the business software. At this time, we'd be glad to entertain any questions you might have.
Is there a motion?
Mr. President, I'd like to move for the adoption of the Consent Agenda, which, for the record, I would like to read, please. To approve the procurements for asphalt overlay of Children's Village to Huntsberry Brothers at $117,125. Breakfast items to Kellogg's Food Away from Home at bid unit prices. Smoothie beverages and equipment to Ridgefield's Brand Corporation at bid unit prices. Switches for network connectivity on three orders to Skyline Technology Solutions in a combined total of $445,330.31. MacBook computers, iPads, and carts for Bester Elementary School to Apple Incorporated at $239,497.45. Servers for the Center for Educational Services. Network to Dell Computer Corporation at $27,327.92. And IBM VMware Blade Center and Assessment to Tamalapus Group Incorporated in a combined total of $56,839. Would like to move for approval of the Consent Agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Bailey, seconded by Mr. Ridenhour, to approve the Consent Agenda. Is there any discussion or any questions? Mrs. Harchman?
I have a question about the asphalt overlay at Children's Village. This is above and beyond what was put in the budget. Is that correct?
I believe this is the support for Children's Village. I believe, Dr. Wilcox, you had to help me. Maybe, Dr. Wilcox met with some representatives. I know Mr. Ganley is on their board, and one of their needs was this asphalt overlay project. We have an excellent bid with asphalt overlay, and that was our agreement to help support Children's Village, I believe.
What says purchases to date met the 200,000 budget?
Right.
$200,000.
We have, when we brought to you back in May, we had an estimated $200,000 worth of our own projects that we intended to do under the unit pricing with Huntsberry. This exceeds that $200,000. We will transfer money within the maintenance budget to cover this, out of other contractual services.
Mrs. Harchman, just to be clear, the $200,000 that we've expended was not at Children's Village, it was across the system in other parking areas.
Okay.
So, this is just, since we've spent that money, we're asking for permission to spend an additional beyond the $200,000.
So, this specifically goes to Children's Village?
Yes, this was specifically.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry.
It's all right.
Are there other questions or other discussion? If not, the, the question's on Mr. Bailey's motion to approve the Consent Agenda. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? The motion passes seven to zero, and the student member concurs.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think one of our individuals who may have signed up for public comment may have arrived, is Ms. Moses? Yes? Okay, we, we've already completed the part of the agenda where we do public comment, but if you'd like to come and take this opportunity, you're more than welcome to. You sure? Okay, I'm not going to ask again. All right. And Brent Taylor is still not here, is that correct? Okay, we'll move on then to the second item under new business, or third item under new business, which is consideration of the first reading of revised policy KJ, advertising in the schools.
Good afternoon. The Policy Committee discussed policy KJ during its public work sessions conducted on July the 2nd and July 23rd. The Policy Committee also reviewed the policy and administrative regulation adopted by the Montgomery County Public School System on the same subject. The Policy Committee has the following three specific recommendations. First, that this policy be placed in a new format in accordance with policy BG. Number two, that it be streamlined... two, that it be streamlined. And number three, that it provide that the superintendent is authorized to promulgate regulations to address specific situations that might arise. Thank you.
Is there a motion?
Mr. President, I move to approve the first reading of revised policy KJ, which is entitled Advertising in the Schools.
Is there a second? Motion by Mrs. Fisher, seconded by Mrs. Williams. Is there any discussion? Mrs. Harchman?
I have a question about the statement that says the school system will not become a representative or advocate for any commercial interest. What are, how is that affecting the advertising on the baseball fields?
That's one of the things that we did specifically talk about during one of the public work sessions, and you're talking about South Hagerstown High School signage, and that's something that's actually undertaken by the boosters at that particular school. They use those funds to assist with other activities there at the school. That's just mere signage. It's not seen as something where the school system is advancing or promoting any particular type of product or service, but rather as something that brings resources to that particular school. And oftentimes, what happens with these funds that are collected is that some students aren't able to afford certain activities, so the school principal has those financial resources available to help those students.
Good, because I just drove by the other day and said to my husband, what a great use of those fences. So anytime we can do that, I'm all for it.
And this allows it, it doesn't allow that activity.
Good. Thank you.
Are there other questions? If not, the question's on the approval of the first read of revised policy KJ. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero, and the student member concurs.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is personnel action.
Dr. Hardings, Dr. Wilcox, members of the board, as discussed earlier in closed session, there are several personnel actions for your review and approval.
Is there a motion?
Mr. President, I move to accept personnel action as recommended.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Mrs. Brightman, seconded by Mrs. Fisher, to approve the personnel action. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President, I'd like to ask if Mrs. Francisco could just briefly give a sort of a timeline and a explanation of our protocol on our hiring, from posting of a job position to the actual hiring. We don't always, as a board, vote on all of those, and we tend to not get involved until that voting process. So how can you explain that so the public understands?
Okay. Positions that are posted, whether they're for internal or external candidates, are on our website, our e-recruiting system. They're available for viewing for eight to 10 days. Applicants provide their information. If they're already in our system, they've already applied for something else, they can simply check a box that says I'd like to also apply for this position. And then for teacher positions, the principal will review the candidates. They will decide who they want to interview. They'll create the interview pool through Apple Track. They can also set up their interview series. So everything is managed through one system. Applicants or candidates are invited to an interview. They choose a time they'd like to come. The principal sets up the interview pool, who they will have accompany them, whether that's an assistant principal or a lead teacher. It depends on what the position is. They conduct the interviews. For a typical, you know, let's say a principal's hiring a third-grade teacher, they normally make that decision when the interviews are done, the first round of interviews, and they let us know in HR who they want to hire. We make sure the person has everything they need, all of their references, et cetera, and HR makes the offer. Sometimes for administrative, typically for administrative positions and for more visible positions, there's a second round of interviews with a smaller group of kind of the top tier from the first round, and then same process, the recommendation to hire is made to HR, and the offer comes from HR.
And during the whole process, confidentiality is, I assume, key?
Absolutely, yes. You know, we reinforce that, particularly because nothing is official until you approve it. So we do let candidates know that they are not officially approved until they are officially approved. So we do encourage confidentiality in HR. We believe in that strongly. Principals, I know, maintain that. We can't always control what candidates or applicants do, but we do let them know that that is our expectation.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Sure.
Are there any other comments?
I'll just follow up on that. Thank you for asking the question. Yes, the, and I, certainly I think any board member can vote on anything for any reason they want, but certainly my approach to personnel has always been that my role in the process is to help make sure that, ensure that the process is fair. And I know you work very, very hard to do that, but the board is sort of the check on all of those processes. So for people in the public who I know often call me and ask, how can I get a job? I mean, that really is not my role. And in fact, if I were to intervene, I might have to recuse myself from my involvement in the future part of the process. So I just wanted to, because you do, I'm sure all board members do occasionally get calls from people that, you know, can you get me a job in wherever? And as much as many times I might like to, I really can't break that part of the process. So thank you for providing that explanation, and thank you for the question. Are there any other questions or comments?
If not, the question's on Mrs. Brightman's motion to approve personnel actions recommended by staff. All those in favor? Are there any opposed?
I'd just like to recuse myself, Mr. President.
So the motion passes six to zero with one abstention, and the student member abstains.
Thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to board member committee reports. We'll start. Is there anything from student government?
Last week, our officer team met to discuss our plans for the upcoming county general assemblies and possible fall fundraiser, and we're going to meet again this week.
Thank you. Mrs. Harchman, curriculum?
Curriculum and instruction. We'll meet August 26th at 11:15 in the board conference room, and the agenda will be posted.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Finance?
Yes, the finance committee met on July 23rd. Agenda items included a review of the financial reports through May, a discussion of the status of the health care self-insurance fund for 2014 fiscal year end, and a discussion of the budget calendar for the fiscal year 2016. The next meeting of the finance committee is scheduled for August 26th at 3:30 in the finance conference room.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Mrs. Fisher, policy review and development?
Yes, policy, excuse me, Policy Committee met July 23rd. We did make a few stylistic changes to the policy KJ, which we just passed on first read a few moments ago. We discussed a number of advertising scenarios that the schools might face to provide some guidance to help with the creation of accompanying regulations, which the superintendent will be putting together. We also began work on KLB entitled Public Complaints About the Curriculum and Instructional Materials. We will be continuing our work on this at the next meeting after reviewing the regulations and exhibits. We then initiated a discussion of policies JFCI and JFCHA, which deal with alcohol and drug use. Our next meeting will likely recommend a rescission of those and create a new policy, which will be re-coded in accordance with NSBA and NEPN guidance. And our next meeting is August 12th at 3:30.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Mr. Bailey, facilities?
Facilities has been in recess during the summer months, but we will be meeting Fourth Tuesday in August. Agenda is in the development at the present time. But aside from that, I think it's noteworthy to mention that the Bester Elementary School project is on time. Parking lots are being developed and playgrounds as we speak, and I checked with Dr. Michael this morning, and everything's going fine and on time, on schedule.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Mr. Ridenhour, HR?
HR met, I believe it was the 22nd. We talked about some policies that may be rescinded, that we would recommend to be rescinded, that dealt with the human resources area. And we did a discussion, or was a discussion, about workplace harassment. The committee will meet again on the 26th, Tuesday, the 26th of August, 10 o'clock, in the board conference room.
Thank you, Mrs. Brightman. The Ad-Hoc Committee on Orientation?
Thank you. During our public, well, first of all, I handed out a packet to all of my colleagues during, just before the closed session, so if anyone wanted to pull that out, but that's basically what we'll be discussing. We had our fourth meeting this morning at 7:30, and so what you're seeing is really a report out from that meeting. During our public business meeting on May 20th, the Board of Education passed a motion to establish an ad hoc committee on new member orientation. We met on the 17th, the 1st of July, the 15th of July, and again this morning. And just briefly, and all the minutes are available on website. Those were all open meetings. The committee studied policy administrative regulations, practices of several Maryland Boards of Education. The committee found the regulations that govern the focus of the work of Baltimore County Board of Ed to be a valuable model, so we did borrow from their policy. We adopted a calendar, again, which is available in the minutes, and our preliminary report will be to rescind existing policy BHA, which is the orientation of new board members, to rescind administrative regulation BHR orientation for new board members, and to adopt new policy BIA, new board member orientation, and the regulations BIA, our new board member orientation. We also are recommending to rescind policy BHAA or board candidate orientation. And we, when I finish, I'll be making a motion to send this to the Policy Committee for their consideration. We have met the charge of having completed our work to date before August 31st, and we actually, I think the original charge was to try to get it through Policy Committee and back out prior to the election, so that we would have something in place for new board members. Also, based upon its discussion, the committee members believe that the new Board of Education members would benefit from a written publication, something like a handbook that sets forth in a concise manner the operating procedures of our board, and such publication would provide an overview of the role of Board of Education and its members. The committee, in consultation with the superintendent, will be preparing a draft of a handbook for the consideration by all members of the Board of Ed. So at this point, I will move to send these recommendations to the Policy Committee for their consideration.
Motion by Mrs. Brightman to send the recommendations on policy to the Policy Committee. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Ridenhour. Is there any discussion on the motion? Mrs. Fisher?
I noticed you're recommending the reset, rescission of BHAA. Will there also be a new board candidate orientation?
At this point, not. And I think once you look at the content of the other two new policies, it will become clear as to why we decided to do that. And again, it is a recommendation, and it'll be for further discussion, certainly by the whole board.
Is there any further discussion? If not, the question's on Mrs. Brightman's motion to recommend to the Policy Committee the work of the Ad-Hoc Committee on Orientation. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? The motion passes seven to zero, and the student member concurs. Committee reports. Is there anything from MAB or Board of Directors or?
That's fine. I can, I just have one. I am serving on the Ad-Hoc Committee at MAB for the College and Career Readiness Standards, and it's acting as a support to the recent legislation that set up a work group at the state level. MAB has one board member, our president-elect, Gina Jacobs, from PG County, is serving on that, and we're acting as sort of her resource group and giving as much voice to our concerns collectively across the state. And I just wanted just to share a couple thoughts. We're going to be collecting best practices statewide to share. There will be a preliminary report on August 15th, and the final, as by way of the legislation, is December 30th, so I would fully expect some legislation to be in the new, the new session. Things we're looking at, attendance rates, exit levels for English language learners and special ed, tech ready. We're being told that the state wants tech, all counties to be ready for testing by year 2016, 17, even though testing won't have to go totally online till 2017. They're going to be looking for district plan for digital conversion, and also some additional talk about teacher training, technology training. So if any of my colleagues, through their reading and conversations, would like to add information to me, and I'm, we're meeting once a month through December, so I'd be happy to carry some things forward.
Great, thank you for that update. Anything else from other MAB committees, resolutions or agenda, or conference, I always call it agenda planning, conference planning? Nothing?
The Resolution Committee did meet, and we did work on some revisions to resolutions, and there will be another meeting of the Resolution Committee prior to the general meeting at conference, and there'll be several resolutions to vote on at that time. When the revisions come to me as a member of the committee, I'll be sure to send them out so that everyone will have those in advance for review, but at this time, they're in the process of being printed.
Great, thank you for, Mrs. Harchman?
The MAB Conference Planning Committee will be meeting Friday, the 25th of September, to firm up and get ready for the conference in Ocean City. I hope everyone can attend.
Any other committees that individuals want to report on?
I did send in all of the, in the mail to all the board members last Thursday, MAB's latest request for volunteers to sign up for MAB committees. Mrs. Brightman informed me that they'd like to receive those before the annual conference, so we're going to schedule to have a vote as a board on nominations to those MAB committees at our first meeting in September. So if any members can consider what committees they might wish to serve on and come on the, to the first meeting in September prepared to make or accept nominations, I think that would be great. We're going to do our best to try to fill all the committees with a member from our board. That may or may not be possible, but we're going to do our best.
That brings us to miscellaneous business. The first item is board member parking and parking lot signage. We put this on the agenda because some members have had some thoughts about where board members might park or might not park, or whether they should have designated parking spaces. So as a body politic, these are things that we discuss as a group, and in the spirit of transparency, I wanted to ensure that we had this discussion as a board in a public business meeting. So I'm glad to take any motions or any discussion from board members, thoughts they might have about it. In the previous building, there was dedicated parking for board members over near where the board member office was. I simply lay that out as background, and if anybody has any comments or wants to discuss this matter, please, now's, now's the time. Mrs. Brightman?
I'll start it off. I guess I'm a little confused. There were a series of emails about this issue. I guess I'm a little confused, there were a series of emails about this issue, and I think, I appreciate your willingness to put it into this venue, because I think it's important that the, that we have this discussion as a corporate board. Everyone has different needs, so I can only speak from my perspective, certainly. Everything around this building, except the work that we do here on the First and Third Tuesdays, that's governance, and everything else I see around the building has to do with operations. And we have a superintendent who does an excellent job of managing operations and giving direction to our staff. And I do think, certainly, if we have individual members of the public or this board that needs special type of parking needs, I think those could be negotiated on a one-to-one basis. I personally don't require a parking spot, so I would not probably use it. I tend to find one of the big trees out there to park under, because it shades the car. But again, I think that any of my colleagues and myself should feel free to speak to the superintendent directly about any needs like that, and I'm sure they would be taken care of. To me, I feel like a member of a team here, and I think it's a courtesy or best practice to try to run concerns I have through the superintendent, or conversations I have. It's not that I'm asking permission, I just think it's courtesy and a way of being a team member when I'm here in the building. So, those are really my comments on those emails.
Mrs. Fisher?
As was pointed out in one of the emails we received, we did have spaces at the old facility, but at the old facility, the office for the board was in a different end section of the structure of the Board of Education, and away from the parking where those who work, the staff members that work in this building were. And therefore, it was, it was nice to have those parking places. We're not in a separate area as we were before, everyone has one parking lot for those who work here. The parking lot out front has been designated primarily for visitors, so I have no problem with no parking spaces being set aside special for board members.
Other comments?
Mr. President, just commenting from the old facility, I observed on any number of occasions, the frustration on the part of people attempting to park there when the board was not in session, but yet the signs were posted prohibiting them from using seven or eight spaces along the edge of the parking lot. I think the way it has been designated now makes a whole lot more sense, and, you know, I can tell you truthfully that I've seen frustration when a workshop was being held at the old facility, or some special meeting was going on, and those looking and seeing seven spaces that were unoccupied, and not being able to touch them was, was even that much more frustrating. Thank you.
Dr. Harding?
Yes, sir. So, for the people who are watching in the community or sitting in this audience room, why is the board talking with this? I probably am the cause of this. We have a parking designated that speaks to the First and Third Tuesday being a designated reserved spot. In the interest of encouraging people to use those spots in times, as Mr. Bailey said, that were frustrating times, I suggested about 10 different topics, and some people built off them, but I suggested, for example, that we put a sign over the sign that said, "Reserve for Aliens," and, can't remember, creatures or-
Monsters.
Aliens and monsters, a play from a movie. I suggested that we have space for expectant mothers, I suggested we have spaces for visitors bearing gifts, think that that would be humorous. And in retrospect, I can see that, wow, some people thought and think that it wasn't respectful of the serious work that we do here. But, you know, from an operational standpoint, what I was trying to do is create some fun, similar to tomorrow, we're having a water balloon fest, we're going to throw water balloons out on the helicopter park at Richard Wright. Now, I should qualify that, we don't have a helicopter, but we have a helicopter space from the previous occupants of this building, but, you know, in order to pump up United Way, we're trying to do something fun, and Richard was actually voted by his peers in this building as the most likely guy to receive a water balloon dousing. So, just fun things like that. I mean, if you go through this building, the color pops of green and purple, we could have just done green, but, or we could have just done gray, but we chose to make it a fun place. And so, in that spirit, I thought that it made some sense, and to those of you who are worried about the email, I did send an email to all of you saying that, you know, if, if I was mistaken, I would pay for the signs, they were about $30 apiece, and they just fold, they're a plastic piece of plastic that folds over the signs, they don't change your signs, and you notice today, you came up, the signs weren't there, because we just lifted them off, because today's a board meeting day. Interestingly, when all of this stuff was unfolding, and I don't mean to belabor the point, I, I asked people in this building, I asked, you know, 30 or 40 people if they found them funny, and I found a couple of people who said, nah, not so much, but really only two. The rest of people said, yeah, they thought they were funny, and they were hilarious. Some people actually said that they were fighting to get the spots that were designated aliens and monsters, that they were coming earlier to work so they could get that spot, which struck me as really crazy, but our Terry Baker and Mark Mills are just that kind of people, I guess. So, you know, I want to apologize to the board for putting them in that position. I think that it was fun, we're going to use them again at some point in time, but I just wanted to make sure the community knew how those signs got out there. It was really solely at my discretion, and I certainly didn't mean to cause the uproar that it's caused. But I'm not having a very good week with signs, because I'm also the person who authorized the sign of the Bisva thing downtown, which changed the branding of Biscus, we're talking about academic hub. And I wanted to celebrate that they were the, you know, one of the top-rated schools in Maryland, so I said to the foundation, please, come up with a sign. And yet, I know others didn't like that sign. There are people that have called me now from the National Historic Society, representatives of downtown, and just said, superintendent, that's not in good keeping with downtown.
Curiously, they didn't think that was in good keeping, but a dilapidated storefront was historical?
Apparently so.
Okay, just out of curiosity.
I just, I just listened politely, because you know what, at the end of the day, we want to be good neighbors, we want to be good citizens, but we also know that the serious work we have, we ought to have some fun while we do it, if we can. And so, that's what, that was the intent of the signs. I didn't mean to create the drama, and to each of you, I apologize, because that was certainly not my intent.
Are there other comments? Mr. Ridenhour?
You know, I appreciate what Dr. Wilcox had to say, but this goes a little deeper than that. I think we go back to an original email, which spoke to the fact that allegedly a board member told one of our employees not to do as they were directed by supervisor in putting signs in a particular location. That's problematic to me, because that's not a board member's job, and I hope it was a joke on that person's part, but our job is not to intervene in the day-to-day operations of this system, that's what our superintendent's for. Shouldn't be using, as a board member, we are, we're public servants, and that's all we are. You know, we should not think that we have any extra privileges because of our status as board members. You know, we're a policymaking body, you know, we oversee budgets and, and the operations, but day-to-day, what happens day-to-day is the purview of the man that we hired to do that job. And my problem goes back to that original assumption that, you know, that a board member has a right to tell an employee who's not our employee to do something, that, that's out of line. So, all of this stems back to that. Myself, you know, I park where I see a space. Basically, it's first come, first served. If I want the closest parking place, I guess I should come here at 7:00. Otherwise, I'll take whatever's there, I don't care to take a designated space, we don't need it anymore. There is ample parking in these lots for each and every one of us to find a place. So, I mean, that's, that's my view on this.
Just don't take my tree in the middle aisle halfway back.
I've gotten that one.
Ah, okay.
Are there other, are there other comments?
I'd just like to say that parking hasn't been an issue for me, I've used both lots, I've used the employee lot, I've used the lot by the main entrance on days when I needed to make use of the handicap ramp. I do recall receiving an email from Dr. Wilcox back in February, I think it was the 16th of February, which was two days before our meeting here on the 18th, which was our first meeting. And at that time, he said that he didn't have reserved parking signs up for the board at that particular time. He went on to say that he would mark some spaces with orange traffic cones near the employee entrance. So, I don't know that it was ever a question of if there would be designated parking, but when. I was not privy to the conversation where a board member supposedly directed a staff member about the location of the parking spaces. I'm troubled more by the emails that were a result of the email that Dr. Wilcox sent saying that there had been such a conversation. I question why, all of a sudden, it became such an altruistic effort, you know, it was never an issue before at the Commonwealth Avenue location. For as long as I can remember, there's always been designated parking. I've never heard anyone comment negatively about that, but all of a sudden, it's become an issue of whether or not you're a team player, or a good public servant, and I just question the timing of that.
Any other, any other comments?
Again, you know, my comments are different than what Mrs. Williams is, if she's speaking to mine. My comments are, and my, my concern was, that there was an alleged incident where a board member spoke to a staff employee, telling him to ignore what the supervisor said as far as the locations of the signs were concerned, and that's, that's out of line. Simple as that. You know, a board, we are not, we are not to tell employees what to do, that's not our job, ever.
I agree, I agree.
Mrs. Harschman?
Okay, I'll identify myself. In a joke, I mentioned to, I believe it was Boyd, when were you going to, going to put the signs up? At which point in time, he said, "They should be in tomorrow," and I said, "Oh, good," and he said, "Where," he was going to put them on the one side. Jokingly, does everyone get that? I said, "Let's put them on the other side," and he said, "But there are nice trees over here." I said, "Fine, this was out front," which I don't know how they got moved to the back, I don't know when they got moved to the back, and it really doesn't matter to me one little bit. However, what does matter to me is that a week, or a week and a half went by with ridiculous emails. Absolute waste of time. I could not believe it.
Anybody else wish to offer a comment?
Needless to say, I didn't send any emails back, because I had better things to do with my time.
You did send one back, ma'am. Any other, any other comments?
No, I didn't.
All right, we're not, we're not going to speak-
Go look at it.
We're not going to speak, we're not going to speak out of turn, we're not going to speak out of turn.
I will respond when I'm accused of something.
Well, I'll, I'll simply close it by, by saying, I think this is probably a conversation we had to have, it sounds like there's a couple of misunderstandings here, and-
Yeah.
We'll leave it in Dr. Wilcox's capable hands as the-
Such as they are.
-operational leader of the, of the school system, and just, you know, if you're going to give me a parking place, I'll take the helipad. Okay, moving on, I'm sorry.
I have another item of miscellaneous business.
Okay.
Our first meeting in November would be November the 4th, that is Election Day. I don't know if there would, the board wants to consider moving the date because it is Election Day or not.
Great.
We can certainly discuss that as part of the agenda planning process.
Happy to take some day off. Thank you.
Sure. That brings us to future agenda items. Agenda planning did meet this morning, and had, in addition to the discussion on nominations for MAB committees, we're also going to have a report sometime, probably in September, on the summer projects that have been done in schools, the facilities projects, the vestibules that have gone in, any of the Americans with Disabilities Act projects, things of that sort, to provide just the public and the board with information on all the work that the facility staff did to try to improve our schools in the summer. And based on this morning's work session, we'll also have a, either a work session or a, a business meeting discussion of the student achievement data that we weren't able to get to in the work session this morning, because there were so many comments and discussions. That brings us to board member comments, Mr. McHose?
No comment.
Mrs. Harschman?
None.
Mrs. Williams?
No comment.
Mrs. Brightman?
Just a few, I attended the Washington County Drug and Alcohol Abuse Council Commission on July 17th. There were a couple items that I think, even though their good work always affects our families in Washington County and many of our students, there were a couple issues in particular, I thought I would bring to everyone's attention. Teens have choices of, are working on underage drinking, and evidently, the staff at Tech High is, has been a big help, and I just wanted to put a thank you out to them for that, I think that's good work. Also, there's a new Good Samaritan law, which actually gives individuals, let me see how to explain this, there've been instances where people have been dropped off at the hospital in a overdose situation, and the person's driven off. People haven't called to report drug and alcohol issues in their home because the concern that they would be held liable for having that person and that illegal use in their home. Now, the new Samaritan, Good Samaritan law actually reduces and adds a degree of immunity to someone who's actually helping someone who's in dire straits from alcohol or drug abuse. So, they're hoping that they, we can use that going forward. Also, another new law that, toward parents, whoever hosts loses the most. Basically, you cannot serve alcohol in your homes, even if you take the keys away, and if you're the adult in that home, you will be fined and penalized. They've made that much, a very chargeable offense. Also, the fatality review team, there was new legislation that will be going into effect October 1st, that requires a linkage to schools, Dr. Wilcox, and I know that Steve Burnett, I believe, served on that, so I'm, I'm hoping we can have another liaison from the school system on that. A couple, just a pretty rough statistic here, one half of all newborns in our schools, in our hospital here, have to stay two additional weeks for drug addiction. One half of all newborns in Meritas Hospital stay an additional two weeks for drug addiction. Four to five years later, those same children come into our school system with, we can only speculate what issues they have, and because of many- only speculate what issues they have, and because of many confidentiality issues, we cannot, as a school system, always be made aware of some of those pre-existing concerns. To me, that was a very sobering piece of information, so that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Fisher?
I have nothing.
Mr. Bailey?
Mr. President, had the pleasure of attending summer school graduation last Friday. Forty-two graduates, I believe, a dignified ceremony, much joy and happiness on the part of parents and relatives who attended and were there with their students. Mr. Ridenhour gave remarks, and Dr. Wilcox gave remarks that were very appropriate, and I would like to commend the Paramount Elementary School faculty. If my arithmetic, and I was talking about that this morning, is correct, they're going to be able to buy about 390 computers for children in that school. That's a, that's a big piece, and I'd like to commend them and applaud their efforts. And then my, then I have a question. Are those, even though they're bought outside of the board's purview, are they maintained by our technology folks?
Yes. Any technology bought by the district becomes the district's property and is maintained by the district.
Thank you. And then Coleman, I have an assignment for you. I think you can be a banner carrier, or whatever you want to be, on the Sentinel program. I, I would hope that you would be able to come back and talk about feelings of students and information that the board could use.
Will do.
Thank you.
Mr. Ridenhour?
Nothing.
I just have one comment, and that's that on July 1st of this year, the Washington County Commissioners had a meeting in Boonesboro with the Boonesboro Mayor and Town Council. I, as somebody who lives in that community and who have kids in, in those schools and spend a lot of time in Boonesboro, I chose to attend that meeting just as a concerned citizen and member of the public. And I know, I don't think Mrs. Brightman will mind me saying that, that she attended too. It's my fault that at the last public Board of Education meeting on July 15th, I didn't report that to the public and just wanted to know, the public to know that I was there, that as they were discussing issues in Boonesboro, the Commissioners and the council, the council was very interested in where the Commissioners were regarding school mitigation. And through the discussion, they asked me if I had any input, and I was glad to tell them where the process seems to be from our end, which is that we're working with the Commissioners who are working with the developer to try to establish some sort of mitigation process so that they can move forward with the remainder of their development. I didn't mention that three weeks ago. I apologize to my colleagues for that. I apologize to the public, and just wanted to make good on my obligation to report to the public the meetings that I attend. If there's no further business-
Dr. Harding?
Yes?
I just wanted to point out two things. We have a young man who has sat in the audience all afternoon, kind of watching this. It's Tim Honig. Tim is a candidate for his Eagle Scout Award, and as part of that preparation, he had to sit and watch a government body work. And so, Tim, thank you for sitting through all of this. The other thing is, is that Mr. Bailey pointed out to me that we had not taken the opportunity to introduce you to James Korn. James is right there. Jim is there. Jim is our new director or our new supervisor of instructional technology. He and Arnold are overseeing the technology efforts of the district. One of the primary responsibilities that Jim has undertaken is helping to write our technology plan to move us forward from where we are today. And at some point in the near future, you'll be hearing from Jim as he talks about our technology plan, but I want to make sure that all of you knew who that man was back there with that lovely full head of hair.
[laughing] Shiny hair.
All right. If nobody has any further business, I declare the meeting adjourned. Thanks, everyone.
He's done it to me, and he's done it to Karen, and he's never held accountable. I tried to hold him accountable.